Okay, can we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
A move we approve tonight's agenda.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, agenda is moved and next we're looking for approval of consent agenda.
A move we approve the consent agenda for tonight.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Mr. Page. Is there any discussion on that? Alright, can we have a roll call vote on that?
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Mr. Al Carroll is absent. Chair Carlson is absent. Vice Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Next, we have announcements. We'll start with the spotlight on education.
Thank you. A few weeks ago, I had the chance at Community Lab School to be a part of an unusual learning opportunity. In cooperation with UBE's forestry program in Charlottesville City, I joined several Community Lab students in constructing a solar kiln on our campus. The kiln will shrink the amount of time it takes to dry wood from years to a matter of months. The wood can then be more quickly available for use by community groups. This project resulted from the imagination, passion, and energy of our design and engineering teacher, Mr. Redder, and the support of Ms. Hostetter who oversees our IB program. For me, the solar kiln is an example of how inspiration from teachers offer exciting learning experiences. This evening, we are celebrating the inspirational work of 24 teachers and 26 classified staff who exemplified this dedication to students. They are the Teachers and Staff Members of the Year for their schools and departments. I want to quote from Mr. Dan Redding, the Executive Director of Human Resources. "We brought this process forward to highlight exceptional professionals and to celebrate their considerable contributions to the fulfillment of the three goals outlined in our strategic plan: ensuring that students thrive, that communities are valued, and that students are benefiting from equitable and transformative resources." Mr. Redding will talk about the criteria used to select these outstanding professionals, but in general, the standards aligned with those set for by the state to select Virginia Teachers of the Year for each region and one for the entire state. Our Teacher of the Year will be representing our division in next year's statewide competition. I'd like to introduce Mr. Redding, who will tell us a bit more about this very special annual program in our division, and to also introduce our honored guests.
Alright, thank you very much. Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Haas. This evening, we're thrilled to present the first Albemarle County Public Schools Celebration of Excellence, in which we recognize nominees for Teacher and Classified Employee of the Year from our schools and departments. Embedded in our strategic plan, Objective 2, Strategy 3, is the development of staff recognition programs, and tonight, we realize an important part of that strategy. We're also addressing an area that was an opportunity for growth in our Gallup data last year around employee recognition. Tonight, we recognize 53 of our outstanding employees who each make a difference every day in their work. This year, we launched a process in which principals and department heads were asked to run a process in their schools and departments by which staff would nominate a colleague through a collaborative process, and that individual teacher and employee who emerged would have a groundswell of support from their team. Once those nominees emerged, principals and supervisors worked with them to submit a packet to Human Resources that included letters of support and recommendation, and for teachers, responses to writing prompts about student engagement and current issues in education. Each packet we received described an Albemarle employee who is contributing at very high levels to student success and our achievement of the goals of the strategic plan. A committee reviewed those nominations and rated them against the nomination criteria, which led to finalists. From the finalists, overall winners for Teacher and Classified Employee were selected. This evening, we're thrilled to be joined by many of our nominees and their loved ones who support them. So we have a plan for this. I would like to call each nominee, and we'll start with our Teachers of the Year. We'll ask those nominees to go around and come down that side of the auditorium where Dr. Kaiser is going to hand them their plaque. We have a beautiful plaque commemorating your nomination for this recognition. After you receive your plaque, we'd like you to come up and shake hands with the superintendent and our school board members, and then we'll have you line up here, kind of in front of the dais, and we'll do a big group photo for the teachers. After that, we'll go ahead and do the same with our classified employees. Finally, at the end of the evening, our Teacher of the Year winner and our Classified Employee of the Year winner have prepared some remarks for the board and the community. So they'll have the opportunity to share those with us. So with that, let's start recognizing our teacher nominees. From Western Albemarle, Brian Ball. From the Department of Technology, Jessa Campbell. From Meriwether Lewis, we have Bonnie Carey. From Scottsville, Elizabeth Cox. And Bonnie is being represented tonight by her principal. She could not make it. From Croze Elementary, Jalen Christ. From Jackson P. Burley Middle School, Ainsley Davis. And Principal Cassandra Blunt is picking up her plaque. From Lakeside Middle School, Bobby Greg. From Walton Middle School, Heather Keppel. Principal Josh Walton will accept the award on Heather's behalf. From Henley Middle School, Pam Corey. And we have the Assistant Principal accepting on Ms. Corey's behalf. From Hollymead, Sarah LaPrada. From Journey Middle School, Patricia Mariscal. From Woodbrook Elementary School, Kim Martin. Virginia L. Murray Elementary School, Hollins Mills. From Agner Hert Elementary School, Adam Moore. Mountain View Elementary School, Mary Morales. Albemarle High School, Jennifer Morris. Baker Butler Elementary School, Danielle Paxton. Brownsville Elementary School, Angela Rutherford. Stone Robinson Elementary School, Laura Sexton. Greer Elementary School, Karen Sneed. From Broadus Wood Elementary School, Elizabeth Strauss. Stony Point Elementary School, Julia Trammell McGill. From Community Lab, Kristen Wilson. And Kristen's award is being picked up by her principal, Chad Ratliff. From Red Hill Elementary School, Aralana Zlotnik. And so, right before spring break, I had the pleasure of accompanying the superintendent to surprise our last person on our list, as she is our Albemarle County Public Schools' Teacher of the Year, and will be our nominee to be the Region 5 Teacher of the Year, and then the Virginia Teacher of the Year. This nominee is Monticello High School's math teacher, Jessica Eisenhower. And as she is finishing, shaking hands with our school board members, if our Teacher of the Year nominees, if you want to come down and line up along here, we'll get a great photo view and school board members and Dr. Haas, if you'd like to join them, so that when we put this up on the website, you're part of the celebration. Alright. In just a few moments, after we recognize our classified employees, we'll invite our Teacher of the Year back to share some remarks, so hold on for that. And we'll now proceed to recognize our classified employees of the year. So we'll follow the same procedure. As I call your name, if you will stand and proceed over, Dr. Kaiser has a plaque, and then our board members would like to congratulate you, and we'll similarly line up for a photo. We'll start with Journey Middle School, Chastity Clements, Office Associate. Walton Middle School, Lolita Curry, Teaching Assistant. From Department of Technology, Christina Denyer, Senior Technology Support Specialist. Hollymead Elementary School, CJ Hall, Teaching Assistant.
Well deserved. Congratulations.
Lakeside Middle School, Connor Harris, School-Based Substitute. And Hollymead Principal Joe McCauley is picking up CJ Hall's plaque for her. From Meriwether Lewis Elementary School, Kelly Hathaway, Office Associate. Building Services, Tracy Hokut, Office Associate. Albemarle High School, Carol Jansen's School Nurse. Stone Robinson Elementary, Stephanie Jones, Lead Custodian. Stony Point Elementary School, Teresa Jones, Special Education Assistant. And her principal is accepting on her behalf. From Virginia L. Murray Elementary, Janet King, Office Associate. Thank you for accepting on her behalf. From Brownsville Elementary, Jennifer Lane, Office Associate. And her principal, Mr. Crutchfield, will accept on her behalf. From Henley Middle School, Alyssa Lane, Office Associate. Child Nutrition, Lisa Marshall, Food Service Manager. Western Albemarle, David McCauley, Custodian. And Ms. Sublet will take the plaque on his behalf. Transportation recognizes Robert Mitchell, Parts and Service Clerk. Community Lab recognizes Rachel O'Neil, Office Associate. Scottsville Elementary, Elizabeth Payne, Teaching Assistant. Red Hill Elementary School, Casey Powell, Office Associate. From Mountain View Elementary, Darlene Ragland, Special Education Assistant. From Woodbrook Elementary, Susan Royshling, Office Associate. From Baker Butler, Emily Sims, School Nurse. Broadus Wood, Ruth Smith, Office Associate. Monticello High School, Roxanne Steph, In-School Suspension Assistant. Greer Elementary School, Darla Ulery, Office Associate. Croze Elementary School, Juliana Vining, Social Emotional Learning Counselor. Jackson P. Burley Middle School, Sharon Wood, Office Associate. And that leaves our Classified Employee of the Year. And we'd like to call down. We surprised her also right before spring break at Agner Hert, Ms. Pacolia Connor, EDEP Site Facilitator. As Ms. Connor is being congratulated by the board, we do have two brief recognitions after this, so we'll do our photograph with our classified employees. Ms. Eisenhower has prepared some remarks, and Ms. Connor has prepared some remarks that we want to hear from them, and then we'll go ahead and have two brief recognitions right after this. Come on over, everyone. And as everyone's heading back to their seats, I would like to invite our Teacher of the Year to come to the podium and share her thoughts.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Eisenhower, and this is my fifth year working in the division. I have taught algebra, functions, and data analysis, trigonometry, and math analysis at Monticello High School since 2018. I began my career in 2016 with a desire to teach math, but have continued in this career by shifting my focus to teaching students. Each day, I get to partner with students and families as they experience their greatest successes and their hardest days. I have stood shoulder to shoulder with students as they have passed their first SOL of their academic career, as they have grown from freshmen earning all Fs. as they have grown from freshmen earning all Fs to juniors earning all As and Bs, and as they have grieved the loss of a friend. And I have learned so much more from my students and their families. I have learned that fear and courage aren't mutually exclusive, that it is not if our students see themselves represented in our classrooms, but how, that our job is not to help students out, but to earn the right to be asked in. But most importantly, I have learned that even when systems fail and buildings close, the communities we build never do. Thank you for the recognition today, and thank you to my fellow teachers, staff members, administrative team, and community members.
Thank you, Ms. Eisenhower. I just received a message, actually, that we might have a special guest here this evening that wants to introduce Ms. Connor. When I heard this, I thought that was a testament to really what our employees bring to children, that students who finished their elementary career, moved on, and are in college now, want to come back and recognize someone who made such an impression on their lives. And that truly is, I think, what Dr. Haas meant when he said at convocation, "You make a difference every day." It may be a small difference, it may not be something we can see immediately, but it manifests over time in ways we don't even know. So you're not here to hear me, though, you're here to hear Ms. Connor. Come on down.
Good afternoon. Fourteen years ago, I came from South Carolina. I joined the Alamo County Public School System as a teacher assistant and EDEP Assistant Site Facilitator at Agner Hert Elementary School. My values are my standards for the achievement and well-being of all students, to attain their highest potential as lifelong learners in a global society. Through tough love, building endurance, teaching strategies, and assurance students that I will always be there for them has allowed them to persevere. Families respect the rapport that has been nurtured with students by challenging them to overcome academic, social, and emotional obstacles while still providing a warm demeanor that shows I genuinely care. When I reminisce about my years at Agner Hert and the many students I have encountered, the ones that clearly stand out without a doubt is Melikai Fields. Melikai Fields was a Ranbuck Shrews third grader, full of energy with an attitude. But the real Melikai was a kind and gentle person. With dual roles as a teacher assistant and an EDEP Assistant Site Facilitator, I was fortunate to observe Melikai throughout the school day. I would make time in my schedule to check with Melikai to see how things were going. If he was having a bad day, I'll ask his teacher if I could just take him for a walk, and we will talk about how things were going and help him to regain his composure. From third grade to fifth grade, Melikai and I formed an everlasting friendship. He still stops by to visit me today when he has time in his busy UVA academic and football schedule. Because of my dual titles, I have established a bond with two very special teachers at Agner Hert, April Barefoot and Cheryl Brooks-Stavens. We're better known as three Ps in a pod. We share the craft of teaching and a love of empowering students to have a voice, and as I, Principal Dr. Ronnie, would say, "To be the best you can be." I'm overwhelmed with emotions as a recipient of this first-time Classified Staff Member Award. I am honored and humbled to receive this award. I will continue to be an exemplified Classified Staff Member and represent the many faucets of the Alamo County Public School System. Thank you.
Thank you, school board members, for your support. Thank you. I know we have many principals and assistant principals here this evening, and family members supporting our Employees of the Year, so thank you all. Dr. Kaiser? Just regular announcements? Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you all so much. Congratulations, and a special congratulations to Ms. Eisenhower and Ms. Connor. I know that I'll be thinking about your comments for a long time, so thank you very much for your words. Next, we have our announcements. Dr. Haas, do you have announcements?
I'll just go ahead and save my announcements for soup business.
We have two, if you guys want to stick around for two minutes, of some employee recognitions, and then you can go, I promise.
All right. Good evening, school members and members of our audience. Please join me this evening in celebrating members of an extraordinary team. This week is our division's Building Services Professionals Appreciation Week. We had two nominees from that department, if Stephanie's still around and Tracy. It's a fitting occasion to express our sincerest thanks to all the people who provide a safe and clean environment in all our facilities. We all saw during the pandemic how quickly, effectively, and how responsibly these frontline champions regularly exceeded our highest expectations for dedicated service. It's been noted before, but it's worth mentioning again, that our Building Services Department cares for 2.3 million square feet of building space and more than 630 acres of grounds across the county. More impressive than the sheer amount of space these employees care for is their passion for creating and maintaining clean, safe, and optimum learning environments that enable students to learn at their highest levels. One recent experience is an excellent example of this passion and the dedication of our team. On a Friday afternoon, water was discovered coming from the concrete curb in the bus loop at Scottsville Elementary in the area where the main water line from the well to the school is located. Our Building Services crew was immediately dispatched to begin locating the source of the leak. Working into midnight through pouring rain, the crew had to remove the sidewalk, curbs, and asphalt to find the source of the leak. They returned in the early Saturday mornings, still in the rain, to make the repair. It appeared the bus loop would be off limits until after spring break, but working with the principal, the team was able to make adjustments, and they had that bus loop fully operational within two days. So please join me in thanking our Building Services Professionals for all of their service in making so many of our days normal days.
Any of our assistant principals who are still in the audience, if you could just stand up a minute, it'd be great.
And please stay standing. Good evening, Board. Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. The National Associations of Elementary and Secondary Schools Principals said it best when they described National Assistant Principals Week as a celebration of the unsung heroes in our education system. This year, this well-deserved recognition coincided with our spring break between April 3rd and April 7th. Here's what the National Association said of their memberships. Assistant Principals work tirelessly to bolster teachers, motivate students, support their principal, create a positive learning community, and face so many unpredictable challenges that land on their desks. They have a crucial role in ensuring that our entire school community is connected to students, to one another, and to families. This is especially true in our school division, where our vision commits us to prepare leaders of a dynamic and diverse society, where our mission always emphasizes working together as a team to build relationships that foster success, and where our values promise that we will fulfill such powerful commitments as equity, excellence, family, and community and wellness. Let me share one definition of what someone is as an unsung hero. An unsung hero is described as someone who simply does the job of being a selfless member of the team, constantly looking for ways to improve the team in any way they can, and who know that the team is more important than any accolade that they could receive. Here in Albemarle County Public Schools, we are incredibly fortunate to have in every school 35 professionals who stand back because it is more important that the students stand forward. One of the scientific magazines took on the challenge of researching what makes a hero, unsung or otherwise, and here's what it found. First, it's someone who performs in service to others in need. Second, it requires acts that go beyond prescribed duty. And third, it is service performed selflessly even in the most difficult moments. On behalf of all who have gained professionally, personally, academically, and developmentally from those heroes who are our assistant principals in every one of our schools, I offer the most heartfelt of congratulations, the most deeply shared thanks, and the highest wishes of a very grateful school community.
Thanks very much, Dr. Kaiser, and congratulations to all. Does anyone else have any announcements from the board? Next, we have public comment. Dr. Berlin will be doing our public comment tonight.
Good evening. We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Individuals and/or organizations wishing to speak during public comment must sign up with the clerk. Sign-up is available online beginning at 9:00 a.m. on the Monday of the meeting week until 3:30 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol. State name and address or voting district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to the school board governance or school division operations. Give written statements or other supporting material to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A color-coded light system is used to time presentations. The yellow light means the speaker is two minutes into the presentation, and a red card or light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit of the presentation and must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. Debate and dialogue with the school board are not allowed. We have six speakers tonight, and I'm just going to list them all, and we will go through them in that order. Barbara Cookshank, Vern Lickte, Bruce Henning, Janie Pudhordowski, Tom Ekmic, and Kelsey Cowger. Barbara, do you want to come forward, please?
Yes, thank you. Humbling to be here, following all of these wonderful educators, but... So if I could, I would like you, I gave out some sheets, and I would ask you just to look at the color-coded sheet. This shows a chart of the readings from a radio frequency radiation meter. And you can see the green level is a level that's safe for humans, and all the way up to the top is extreme levels of wireless radiation. When I did measurements at Albemarle High School, I was finding measurements up at the 6. So I was finding very high levels of radio frequency radiation. So what I'm told now is that there are going to be additional antenna to be placed on the cell tower, and there are three new antenna on the roof of the school building. The other document I have is from T-Mobile. This was a document 86 pages long. I did send it electronically to you, but this is just some of the pages from it. This is 23 years old, so T-Mobile was looking at the health impacts of the wireless infrastructure on human health. And what they found was that indeed wireless radiation can cause cancer in humans. It can cause immune damage, damage to your immune system. It can cause problems with fertility, can cause actually infertility, and it can cause cognitive problems and neuropsychiatric problems. So the last thing they note in here is that it can cause electro-sensitivity, which I have a pretty significant case of that. On page 37, what is really worth looking at, they address base stations or cell towers. They say on page 37 that if you're spending more than four hours near a base station, you should be in the green area. And what I'm saying to you as a school board is that we're far from the green area, and we have students six to eight hours, teachers five days a week, and we have 23 more years since this came out for the shareholders, not for the public, to know that there are several thousand studies showing harm to human health. So the school board and school officials have a responsibility to provide a safe environment for the students, and I know that you try very hard to do that, but you can't ignore the radio frequency radiation. And there also are some legal implications here because the FCC guidelines for safety are very outdated, and... Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lickte?
Good evening. My name is Vernon Lickte, and I'm a teacher at Albemarle High School and the president of the Albemarle Education Association. Tonight, I wanted to give my appreciation to the school board for authorizing Superintendent Haas to create a resolution for collective bargaining. I also want to express my appreciation to Dr. Haas for expressing his intent to work together with the Albemarle Education Association to help make a strong collective bargaining resolution for the workers of Albemarle County Public Schools. Once the division's draft resolution is complete, the AEA welcomes working with the division to make the collective bargaining resolution as strong as possible to see that Albemarle County Public School workers have a strong say in their contracts, as many public sector workers across the country have. This is an important step to help reach one of the division's key goals, to retain and recruit professional educational workers. The AEA looks forward to working with you all to make effective and impactful collective bargaining in Albemarle County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Henning? Is Mr. Henning in the room? Bruce Henning? Seeing no one by that name, we're going to move forward. Ms. Pudhordowski?
Good evening. I'm Janie Pudhordowski, and I live in the Rio District. I'm representing IMPACT as co-chair of their preschool childcare community, and I believe they're standing. IMPACT is a local social justice organization made up of 26 faith-based congregations in the Charlottesville-Albemarle community. Several years ago, our members voted to work on the issue of families struggling to access and afford preschool and childcare. We met with many local providers and staff of both the city and the county school systems. This, as well as stories from our members, brought forth the fact that there are working families who are not able to send their preschoolers, who qualified for public preschool, to the quality preschool programs in both the cities, both school systems, as neither of them have full-day care options. So we began seeking this in both school systems, and that's why I'm addressing you tonight. We know from our meetings and correspondence with some of you and staff that this is recognized as a need. We know some steps have been taken, including the pilot after-school care programs last year at Woodbrook and Mountain View Elementary Schools, and this year, having two preschoolers included with kindergarteners in the Extended Day Enrichment Program at Scottsville Elementary. However, we've heard no assurance that there will be any options at any schools with Bright Star classrooms for the next school year and into the future. As a parent, grandparent, and former physical therapist... As a parent, grandparent, and former physical therapist serving at many of the county schools, I know personally the impact of quality preschool education on the ability of a child to succeed in school. Every child needs this experience to be on equal footing when they begin kindergarten. This is an equity issue. These are families who can't afford private preschool programs, so these children identified as at risk to not succeed in school will not get the preschool education they need to prepare them for school. This is unacceptable that vulnerable children may not be able to utilize the pre-K program because schools have not figured out a good solution for after-care. Preschoolers don't have time to wait. I'm asking you, and the other IMPACT members here tonight with me, are asking you to take action on after-school care now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Ekman?
Hi. Hi, I'm Tom Ekman. I'm a member of IMPACT. I also live in the Rivanna District, live in Benavard. I'm speaking to you today because there are families who need preschool, after-school care for Bright Star students in the county schools that they attend. I have some personal experience with this. My daughter Megan is a single parent. She enrolled her son in both pre-K and kindergarten, but she would not have been able to do this without the help from my wife Janie and myself, picking him up at 2:30 and watching him until she got off work. Not everyone has grandparents nearby that can help like this. Vinnie is now in first grade, and I have seen the benefit of his early start. He is reading, he's adding, subtracting, and even multiplying, and he loves to go to school. When I read him books at night, he corrects me when I make an error. This is happening at first grade. I acknowledge staffing, that there's a staffing issue as a challenge, and I know that you are considering ways to meet this challenge. Preschoolers need priority in after-school care, as they may not be sent to the county's quality preschool if there's not full days available for care. Working parents may have no option but to send them to a full day with a babysitter with no educational background or skills needed to prepare young children for kindergarten. That leaves these at-risk children at a disadvantage. We need to start somewhere. We need to reserve a few spots for preschoolers in the lottery, lottery for extended day program at the schools with Bright Stars. I also understand to meet this, you will need a one-to-10 ratio of staff to students. But these preschoolers need to get a good early start. I can tell you firsthand, it makes a huge experience. So thank you, and I hope you will do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Cowher?
My name's Kelsey Cowher, and I'm here to talk tonight about the urgent needs around pre-K after-care, as did Jane and Tom, Janie and Tom. I'm here tonight as both the co-president of IMPACT and as the parent of a child who will be starting his first pre-K year this fall. Tom and Janie already laid out our concerns about this issue, so I'll just add a few additional points. This year, IMPACT has been frustrated by what we perceive is a lack of urgency on the issue by ACPS staff. And we're here tonight to ask the school board to exercise their oversight function and to help us get traction on this issue within the schools. We've been working on pre-K after-care since 2020, and in that time, some children who could have been students in three years of classes have been unable to access the county schools' pre-K because the school day ends at a time that makes the program unworkable for working parents. We've reached out extensively to Kelvin Reed, Director of Preschools, and he's declined to meet with us or even answer most of our emails. We've heard over and over that schools have limited resources, lots of problems, have to prioritize. We understand that. And I recognize that vulnerable four-year-olds don't vote, I recognize they can't come to school board meetings, and that their working parents may not have the bandwidth to spend their evening hours advocating for a school day that works for their family. But that doesn't mean the need's not there, and we have to be the grown-ups in the room. What should absolutely be a priority for the board is the persistence of the achievement gap. Our area has one of the most pronounced achievement gaps in the state, I'm sure that's not news to you, and study after study confirms that investing in pre-K is one of the most effective ways to close that achievement gap. And yet, ACPS continues to exclude a meaningful number of kids from its pre-K program simply because parents need their kids to have supervision during the workday. IMPACT has asked the county schools to consider letting preschoolers participate in the lottery program for EDEP. It's not a perfect solution by any means, but it would create potential opportunities for families where now there are none. And all the four-year-old Malachies deserve the chance to work with all of the Mrs. Connors in EDEP. We're here tonight to urge the school board to make this a priority. It's a small change, but it's one that would make a profound difference in the life of many vulnerable children who deeply need it. Thanks so much for your time and for listening to our issue.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for everyone, to everyone for your comments this evening.
Thanks very much for everyone's comments. Next, we have school division business. We're starting with the special education annual plan for the school year.
Ms. Lee, I just had a couple of things for soup's business. I noticed it's not actually listed on the
Oh, yeah, I was wondering about that, sorry.
Agenda, so, but I'm just going to go ahead. So just a couple of things real quick. One is I really appreciate Ms. Lee coming out and visiting Baker Butler with me on Monday. We had a great visit with the principal and assistant principal, visited many classrooms, and were really impressed with all the great work that was going on at Baker Butler. The second thing, I just want to give a quick update to the board on the work we're doing to prepare, to work collaboratively with the AEA on resolution for collective bargaining. So as a reminder, my aim is that we have, first, a timeline and manageable expectations for completing the draft of the school board's desirables in terms of a resolution, and, second, I want the process to be a collaborative process. So since the last time I updated the board, outside counsel Eric Patel, Paul Tell, has completed a draft resolution for my review, as well as Ross Holden's review. On April 11th, I provided initial feedback to Eric. This accompanied Ross's feedback provided during the week of April 3rd. Eric, Ross, and I will meet next week to discuss the draft. We will bring our proposed draft to the school board to receive feedback in preparation for the beginning of the collaborative meetings with the AEA representatives. Once the board is satisfied with your draft, I propose that meetings between board representatives and AEA representatives begin. I propose the following structure for the meeting process. This would be a collaborative meeting process to iterate a collective bargaining resolution. I will chair the meetings. I propose that two representatives from the board meet with two representatives from the AEA. After consideration, considering the various duties of board members, I've requested that Jono Alcaro and Ellen Osborne be the representatives for the school board, and I shared this with our Chair, Katrina Carlson. Pending the board's completed review of the draft resolution, I will work with the board representatives and AEA representatives to establish a first meeting, which I would anticipate would happen in late May. Then, a bi-weekly meeting schedule would ensue with an initial limit of four meetings. This would give us at least a starting time constraint. We can always extend if we need to extend the time, but it's always good to have kind of a deadline and see if you can meet it. Let's see. The objective of the meetings will be to arrive at a shared collective bargaining resolution that the board will consider for approval. So I wanted to provide that as an update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haas.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm just going to keep asking. Next, we have school division business, the special education annual plan for next school year.
I'm Katie Campell, Director of Special Education. Tonight, I'm going to share two main items with you. First, I'll share the current state of special education in Albemarle County Public Schools, and second, I'll share a look forward as I break down the 2023-2024 Special Education Annual Plan. The Albemarle County Public School Strategic Plan, Learning for All, is at the center of our work as educators. It's also at the center of our work in special education, as evidenced by the ACPS mission statement, which includes, "Working together as a team, we will end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all." Special capacities is at the heart of our work in special education every single day. Tonight's presentation has three components. Those components are, one, current state, two, looking forward, and three, time for questions. In order to paint a picture of the current state of special education in Albemarle County Public Schools, I'm going to walk through some data with you. This data demonstrates factors such as the number of students with special needs that we serve, the intensity of services that are required, the different programs that serve students with special needs, and how our students perform on state assessments. On the screen in front of you is the December 1st count, which is the total number of students with disabilities enrolled in Albemarle County Public Schools from 2010 to December of 2022. The December 1st count is a benchmark number that we use to compare year-to-year numbers. It's also utilized by the Virginia Department of Education as a common check across the state. In 2010, you'll see that Albemarle County Public Schools was serving 1,508 students with disabilities. You can also see that our highest number of students that we served was during the 2019-2020 school year at 1,961 students. Then, as we all know, the pandemic hit, and our number went down to 1,792 the following year. However, in the last two years, the number of students we serve is steadily increasing and is on trajectory to be moving back up towards pre-pandemic levels. On the screen now is data that demonstrates the increase in the intensity, or high level of service, that students with disabilities are requiring in order to receive a free and appropriate education. The orange bar shows students who require special education services for 50% or more of their school day. The blue bar shows students who require special education services for 49% or less of their school day. The number of students requiring intensive-level services is increasing at a steady rate. On the screen for you now is early childhood or preschool special education data. This data shows the number of students served in ECSE settings since 2017. For this current year, I think it's important to note that the number may appear low at 68. However, our youngest learners are often still moving through the eligibility process well into the spring, right, and June, so that number is expected to be higher by the end of the school year. Based on our students returning to ECSE next year, plus those in the eligibility process and those that will move into our school district, we're projected to need to serve upwards of 85 students in ECSE next school year. This slide shows the increase in the number of students with autism that we are serving in ACPS. In 2017-2018, we had 164 students with autism. This current school year, we have 207 students with autism, and it's expected to follow the trajectory of increasing next year as well. I highlight students with autism for you because many of our students with autism require a higher, higher level of service than other disability areas. Next is the data trend of the number of students served through post-high since 2017. We also use the December 1st count for this data point. Post-high is our program that serves our students aged 18 to 22 who require special education services but are working towards an implied studies diploma instead of a standard or advanced diploma. The last data slide before you displays SOL pass rate trends since 2007 for students with disabilities. The top two lighter lines show the division average since 2007 for students, for all students. The bottom two lines show reading and math averages for students with disabilities. While students with disabilities are scoring lower than the average student, the rise and fall of achievement performance mirrors that of general education scores. Now that we have a picture of where we are currently, let's look forward to the 2023-2024 Special Education Annual Plan. Federal Regulations, IDA 2004, require every school division to submit a special education annual plan. The annual plan is required to be shared with SEAC, that's our Special Education Advisory Council for Parents, and approved by the school board in order for any state or federal funds to be appropriated for the education of students with disabilities in ACPS. The annual plan can appear overwhelming, but it is much simpler when it's broken down into the four main components. These four components are, one, the regional jail agreement, two, Part B set-aside funds, three, CCEIS, and four, federal grant funds. The first component is the regional jail agreement. Details about this portion of the annual plan are on page seven of the annual plan All school divisions with a local or regional jail inside their jurisdiction are required to establish an inter-agency agreement. ACPS has such an agreement with the Charlottesville-Albemarle Regional Jail. This agreement provides an Albemarle County Public Schools special education teacher who provides educational services to persons in the Charlottesville-Albemarle Regional Jail who are 18 to 22 but require IEP services. This position also supports the regional jail GED program. The regional jail portion of the annual plan comes to life through the work of Ms. BJ Thomas. Ms. Thomas is the ACPS special education teacher who works at the Charlottesville-Albemarle Regional Jail. Ms. Thomas is going to take a few moments to share with you the details of her work.
Good evening. We created a report, a daily report, that shows individuals from 18 to 21 that have a high school, that are in school. So I take that report, and I go out and interview the students that come up on that report to see if they have a high school diploma, GED, or if they receive special education service. Once I get that information, then I send out a request records to the very school that they tell me that they have attended to verify if they actually have a high school diploma or GED or receive special education services. Once I receive the information back, the records back, if they had an IEP, then I'll rewrite the IEP to meet the goals that they would need now for the GED or GED-ready test. And, yeah, and, I lost my train of thought, sorry about that. And then I meet with them on a daily basis, and we work on the needs, on the things that they need to take and get ready for the GED-ready test and the actual GED test to pass the test. So that's what we do with the deal.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. The second component of the annual plan is focused on Part B set-aside funds. Details about this portion of the annual plan can be found on pages 12 and 13 in your document. Again, the federal regulations, right, IDA 2004, require that each school division spend a portion of the IDA Part B funds on students with disabilities who are placed in private school by their parents. How does ACPS utilize these funds? We have a special education teacher who provides consultative services to private schools with special education students. This person also conducts child find slash special education evaluations for students with disabilities who are placed in private schools that are within Albemarle County Public Schools boundaries. We also provide 14 students who are privately placed by their parents with speech and language services, as well as one voucher for occupational therapy services. We also conduct an annual required meeting with private schools that are in ACPS boundaries and parents of students with disabilities at those private schools. The Part B set-aside portion of the annual plan comes to life through the work of Mr. Mike Armstrong. Mr. Armstrong is the ACPS Special Education Part B set-aside case manager. Mr. Armstrong's going to take a few moments to share with you the details of his work.
As Katie said, my name is Mike Armstrong, and I case-manage students who are parentally, students with special needs who are parentally placed in private school settings, as well as students with special needs who are being homeschooled within Albemarle as well as students with special needs who are being homeschooled within Alamo County. Currently, I have 52 students with special needs that I case manage, being served through an ISP. There's about another 10 students that are going through the child find eligibility process. I also provide services to the, there's 34 private schools located within Alamo County borders and I provide consultative services with them. The services that I provide to the students on my caseload are pretty much the case management, monitoring, and consultative services. For the schools within our district, the private schools, I provide consultation. We have a lending program for technology and we also provide training for the teachers in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. The third component of the annual plan is focused on CCEIS and the details of this portion of the plan can be found on pages 12, 13, and 15 in your document. CCEIS stands for Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services. The extra "C" in the title means that it's mandated that ACPS participate in CEIS by the Virginia Department of Education. How does ACPS utilize these funds? We utilize these funds to provide six intervention specialists at the Virginia Department of Education-identified focus schools. Intervention specialists are certified general education teachers who provide intervening services to students not yet eligible for special education. The CCEIS portion of the annual plan comes to life through the work of our amazing intervention specialist. Ms. Rutherford is one of those ACPS intervention specialists, but she also has two other titles, one of which is the Dyslexia Advisor for ACPS and one new title for tonight is Brownsville Teacher of the Year. Ms. Rutherford is going to take a few moments to share with you the details of her work.
Good evening. My name is Angela Rutherford and although I am probably most famous in Western Alamo County as the lady that waves and smiles at car loop each day, my greatest honor is serving in the role of intervention specialist at Brownsville Elementary School. I was posed with the wonderful challenge of summarizing my role in four minutes. So here we go. I serve a caseload of approximately 35 students in grades one through five. In years past, I have supported both math and reading. This year, my services are primarily in literacy. I aim to be a trajectory changer. The year begins by examining data from screening assessments. Screening assessments help us to identify potential candidates for intervention services. Then, diagnostic assessments are used to pinpoint students' specific needs in foundational skills and/or language comprehension. Progress monitoring assessments are selected and administered regularly by the intervention specialist to track student growth. Ed Insight is currently the program used as the container for this data. Progress monitor assessment data is shared with families at school-based intervention team meetings, sometimes called ESPITS, and via quarterly reports and also check-in connects throughout the year. Obviously, assessment is just one part of the puzzle. We know that the best intervention is prevention. Recognizing student needs as early as possible is much more efficient and cost-effective. As the intervention specialist, I am humbled to have the opportunity to collaborate with all of the PLCs, kindergarten through fifth grade. Teachers are passionate about incorporating evidence-based literacy instruction as endorsed by the Virginia Literacy Act. They are pursuing book studies, listening to podcasts, attending webinars, evaluating time usage, and most importantly, sharing with one another. During PLCs, we work together to tighten alignment between classroom and intervention instruction. The stronger the structured literacy around foundational skills and knowledge building in Tier One instruction, the fewer students will need intervention services. In addition to school-level PLCs, intervention specialists, reading specialists, and Title I teachers have the opportunity to gather together on division-wide PLC days to share and evaluate our practices. As the intervention specialist, I have the privilege of providing direct services to students in a small-group setting. Intervention instruction is consistent, explicit, systematic, cumulative, and responsive. Currently, intervention specialists are encouraged to use the SIPs materials from collaborative classroom, which complement our core program, Being a Reader. Intervention instruction is fun and inspiring. There is nothing as motivating as that moment when a student reads an entire sentence independently, stops and looks at you in awe of their own achievement. Helping students to be codebreakers and meaning-makers, to feel confident, competent, and empowered, is my why. Literacy is opportunity and we are using the intervention specialist role to maximize application of everything we know about the science of reading and the science of learning to ensure that every student has that opportunity to succeed.
Thank you. The fourth and final component of the annual plan is federal grant funds, which can be found on page 12 of your document. ACPS utilizes the federal grant funds in two ways. One is to fund approximately 38 of our A Base teachers. Two is to fund approximately two ECSE, Early Childhood Special Education, TA positions. What is A Base? It stands for Building Appropriate Supports with Evidence for Students with Autism. I'm not going to read all that's on the screen to you, you'll have that for your reference. But in summary, A Base was designed for students with autism that are receiving their core academic instruction on grade-level standards in the general education environment with their peers. A teacher and a team of assistants are specially trained in evidence-based practices for students with autism. Currently, we have autism-based programs in many of our schools. On the screen before you are the elementary schools in which we have A Base programs. The asterisk means we're looking to expand the program next year. For example, if you look at Agner-Hurt, we have one program this year and the asterisk means we're looking to expand to two next year based on projections. The same is true for our middle and high schools. We have an A Base program at every middle and every high school except for our community lab school due to low numbers of students with autism. The federal grant funds portion of the plan comes to life through three different lens. You're going to hear from a member of each of these lens. First is Mr. Jared Walding, one of our ACPS autism specialists. Mr. Walding is going to take a few moments to share the details of his work with you.
Hello, everybody. I've got to say, it's really humbling to see all of the numbers. When I first started in Alamo County, my first year here, we only had two A Base programs. So to see something like 35 is really humbling and impressive. So as Katie mentioned, I'm an ACPS behavior specialist. I'm a board-certified behavior analyst. And I think the best way to describe that maybe is the way that I describe it to my kids, which is that I am a behavior scientist. That's probably just the easiest way. They hate that, I will tell you at home. They really do. So I think when I think about my job and how we break it down countywide, I think there's really a global way to look at what we do and then a kind of day-to-day way to look at what we do. Globally, we provide a ton of ongoing training. So we provide training that's mandated by the state. All new teaching assistants to the county who work with students with autism or who will have the potential of working with students with autism are required to be trained in state standards. We provide that training. So the state gives us the standards that they require us to teach and then we, the autism specialists, have created a large training for all of those TAs and we administer that annually. And beyond that, we provide a ton of classroom-level training. So I go into specific classrooms and provide training just on maybe specific students or behavior as a whole. Most recently, I was at a classroom out at Stony Point providing training just on, you know, the basic functions of behavior and why kids may act the way that they do. We're also responsible for informing, implementing, and maintaining a high level of evidence-based practices for working with students with autism. So what we're looking for is to make sure that our A Base programs and our teachers and TAs are implementing things that are peer-reviewed and evidence-based. We don't want to just kind of throw things out there willy-nilly. We want everything to be evidence-based and proven to be successful. One of the main goals that I see for us is keeping students in their LRE. So, you know, thinking back when I started thinking about students that maybe we wouldn't have been able to serve as a county, those students would have ended up being outplaced to private day placements. And now we're able to serve a lot of those kids by simply looking at the barriers that exist that keep them from being able to access the regular SOL curriculum and giving them the support that they need to do that along with independence while we kind of work out the level of adult support that they'll need long-term. And then finally, globally, we work as a part of the ESPIT eligibility teams by providing autism eligibility testing and consultation for ESPIT teams. And then on the day-to-day level, so that's kind of the big stuff, and on the day-to-day level, we provide a ton of in-the-moment staff coaching. I spend the bulk of my day in classrooms working with teachers and students. That's what I do most of the time. So I may give a teacher that emails me and says, "I've got this problem. Will you come in and see it?" And I'll come in and we'll work through it together and then provide whatever necessary training as a result of that. We provide behavioral support, including determining behavioral functions, designing and implementing functions-based and data-driven behavior support plans. Again, we don't want to just willy-nilly something. We really want to make sure that what we're doing is data-driven so we can show success or lack thereof. We troubleshoot student programmatic and behavioral issues. We help craft measurable IEP goals and accommodations, especially this time of year as we kind of come up to the end of the year. We're spending a lot of time with that and we're spending a lot of time helping teachers manage data that they're collecting on student IP goals so that it can be graphed and displayed appropriately so we can track student progress. And then finally, we spend a lot of time adapting and modifying curriculum or helping teachers do that to best meet the needs of their students so they can, again, learn in the least restrictive environment that they have. This is the first time I've been asked to boil my job down in three minutes like we were just talking about. So hopefully, that was effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Second is Ms. Kristen Kress, one of our A Base teachers at Hollymead Elementary School. Ms. Kress is also going to take a few moments to talk about her, the details of her work with you as an A Base teacher.
Hello, I'm Kristen Kress. Whoops. Hello, I'm Kristen Kress and I'm the A Base teacher at Hollymead Elementary School. For me, A Base is really a team approach to help our students with autism meet their academic, behavioral, and social goals. I work with a wonderful bunch of TAs. I have four assigned to me. And I also have a very welcoming faculty and I have nurtured those relationships that help my students walk into those classrooms. I also additionally partner with occupational therapists, speech-language therapists, physical therapists, parents, ESOL teachers, the BCBA's in the counter, like Mr. Walding, outside agencies also. The A Base room is set up so that the kids receive services inside of it, but we also, as a team, push out into the school. So the services inside the A Base room are academic. I'm going to be doing some intervention in reading, math, writing, spelling. Also, I do social skills instruction. What do you do when your friend doesn't want to play tag with you at recess and that has never happened before? What do you do when you are frustrated and you need help from the teacher? How can you positively get the teacher's attention and get the help that you need? We have drop-in moments also when maybe fractions is a new concept and you just can't get it and you need to come to the A Base room and spend a few minutes with either myself or one of my THs to get some one-on-one instruction and then go back to class. And most of all, the A Base room is this safe place that when you are in sensory overload or you're dysregulated or you are just totally frustrated, that you have this safe place where you can go, calm yourself down, return to regulation, and return to the classroom in a dignified manner. When we push out into the school, we also provide some academic support. So if I know that a child is way below grade level in reading, I'm going to push a TA into the science classroom with them so that they can access that on-grade-level science curriculum while we're still building those reading skills. We also support the children behaviorally out in the rest of the school. We run behavior plans, which we set up with the help of the BCBA's and sometimes other outside agencies that help redirect and reward kids as they are learning those school behaviors and they're dealing with their frustrations and they're learning to kind of regulate themselves. And we also support involvement in the wider school. When you go to a jazz band concert, which was wonderful but very loud, sometimes it's easier to sit in the hallway with a TA with earphones on and really enjoy that music at your own comfort level. Sometimes in PE, it's really hard to follow all those rules with all those kids screaming and, "My goodness, I have to show good sportsmanship too." So sometimes having an extra person, a TA, there to help model it and talk you through that and calm you down when you're frustrated makes you more and more successful. My job is to kind of work myself out of a job. I am taking children from dependence to independence, from needing someone else to help you figure out how to get your assignments done, to maintain your behavior, to being able to maintain your own behavior and do your own work. The ultimate goal of the A Base program is for our children, and when I say that, the children with autism and special education, but really all children in this school, to access the curriculum, make friends, grow as individuals, and ultimately, be members of society.
Thank you. Next is the third lens, which is the parent lens. Mr. Hannah is a parent of an amazing A Base student at Hollymead Elementary School. Mr. Hannah is also going to take a few moments to share with you his experience and the impact A Base has had on that experience.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I appreciate giving the opportunity to briefly share with you my experience and our perspective as parents of a child with autism. My wife and I have a son, Alex is his name. He is currently a fifth grader at Hollymead Elementary School. He was diagnosed with autism on the spectrum at two and a half years old, sort of thrown into this world that nobody wants to be thrown into and you're sort of left to navigate it. I can say certainly that the A Base services that my son has had from pre-K all the way to today, to fifth grade, it's hard to sort of overstate the importance of those based on where he was five years ago and where he is today. He was essentially, when he enrolled in the pre-K program, we started at Baker Butler and then transitioned to Hollymead. He was nonverbal, lacked social skills, threw tantrums quite frequently. A lot of that was just because he was frustrated and he couldn't communicate. So we sort of began at that base. And today, as a fifth grader, he is fully integrated into the mainstream classroom. He's on grade level in reading and math. He's passed his SOLs, his third and fourth grade SOLs. We expect to see the same results in fifth grade as well. He's doing wonderfully academically, as I've mentioned. Socially, he has friends. He loves his teachers. He has a very close friend at school he spends a lot of time with. So he's really done very well in the mainstream classroom. He follows directions of the teacher. He started out needing full-time adult support when he was in first and second grade. Over the years, that support has faded. So now, today, he more or less is independent in the classroom, as Ms. Kress has said, really working toward independence. And so an adult aide is there in the background, but he or she is not intervening nearly as much as they used to. And that's caused our son Alex to really be able to feel confident in his skills and where he's at, especially now that he's going to transition from fifth grade to middle school next year. So we really feel fortunate that Alex, you can see that he's very confident in his skills. And one of the things the A Base team has really done that I think is outstanding, I don't think we talk a lot about, and I know Kristen had mentioned the specific supports that they offer in terms of social skills and visual supports and those sorts of things. One of the things I think we need to underscore is... One of the things I think we need to underscore is advocating. So A-Base has done a great job of advocating for our son when he couldn't advocate for himself and then also give him the skills and the confidence where today he is advocating for himself. So he doesn't, you know, I think, you know, the A-Base case manager is, in my son's respect, she has put herself out of a job because Alex is at the point now where he can go on his own. And we're very fortunate, I think, to have had the continuity with Ms. Kress and her team over the entire five years. So when Alex started in pre-K at Hollymead, it was with Ms. Kress. He'll be leaving Hollymead with Ms. Kress as well. So that's an important factor, especially for kids on the spectrum, because they need that continuity of individuals. So just to wrap up, I, my wife and I are really excited and our son Alex obviously is two to move on to middle school. He feels that he has the skills to be successful there. And, you know, again, I think that's in large part due to the support and the staff of the A-Base program at Hollymead Elementary. So again, I appreciate your time and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hannah. Thank you for allowing me some time to talk about what special education looks like in our schools each and every day through the annual plan, but also through your support of our programs. Now, it's time for any questions, reflections you have for myself or any of my panel members.
I very much appreciate this in-depth exploration of the special ed programming. I'm in on the school board now for nine years and this is the most comprehensive dive that has ever been presented, so bravo to everybody. I would like to ask Mr. Hannah or in some of the other staff how you survived through the pandemic and what kind of support you had through that. I mean, even though it's fading gently in the background, I'm sure it had an impact.
So, yeah, obviously the pandemic was a challenge for everyone, especially so, I think, for our son because he just needs that personal interaction. And so the fact that he could no longer go to school and we shifted remotely, to ask any child to sit down in front of a computer and attend class is a large task. To ask someone with autism to do that, it's sometimes nearly impossible. And so we had good days and we had not-so-good days, but we managed to sort of plow our way through. Thank goodness those days are behind us. I will say, you know, hats off to the school system because I think we were able to get Alex back into the classroom as soon as we possibly could. And so, and once that happened, you know, it was much better.
It's interesting that you say that it's fading. I understand that. However, from the intervention specialist's perspective, we're not done.
The consequences are still here.
The consequences of the pandemic are something we need to think long-term. And I know Mary McIntyre is also here at the middle school levels. We will need to think about those cohorts that were in those primary grades during the pandemic and the effects that that is going to have on them on these years as they continue through upper elementary and into middle school.
That's a great point.
I have a question for Ms. Thomas regarding the jail program. About how many students are we talking about each year do we serve there?
Each year, before the pandemic, we served about 10 or 20. Now, it's a little less, so.
And do you remember about how many GEDs have been bestowed upon, have been achieved?
Oh.
I mean, are they making progresses?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Yeah, before the pandemic, we had great success with the GED program, with them receiving a GED. And some of them even got high school diplomas. It just depends on how many credits. And I work with Monticello and we work together to get them the credits that they needed. And so some have gotten high school diplomas and a lot of them have gotten GEDs.
Thank you.
Can I have a question for Ms. Thomas too? Ms. Thomas, are all of your students Alamo County residents, they just happen to be in the jail?
No, they're not all. They're from Fluvana, Louisiana, Northern Virginia, they're all over.
Okay.
So, but once they are identified and we do an IEP for them, they become Alamo County public school students.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we still answering the asking the first question? Pardon? Do people have any other questions? What's encouraging? Does anyone have any other questions?
What I want to hear more about?
Yeah.
So I know through the budget, the school board has approved additional interventionists, additional special education. We know that we probably need more. I'm curious, kind of for all of you, as you think about caseloads, I mean, Mr. Armstrong, I was like thinking about your caseload of 52, you know, your intervention caseload, Ms. Rutherford of 35, you know, as you think about this current group of students we have and then the students who were born during the pandemic and kindergarten during the pandemic and third grade during the pandemic, what are the things that we, like the material things that we need, the interventions that we need as we move forward in the next five years? Because I think one of the things we've continued to think about is, you know, we know we have kind of made a forward purchase, but it probably isn't enough. We have, we've talked as a board about more math interventions. But I'm curious from your hats, what do you think about that kind of, if only I had X in the coming months, years, what are some of those things for us to be thinking about? I hate to put anyone on the spot, but.
I think that Alamo County has made it very clear that we are invested in collaborative classroom, being a reader and SIPs, which hits a lot of those foundational skills. There are some students who need even more than that. And so thinking about those supplement pieces on the foundational skills. The other big piece, when you look at the reading rope, is the language comprehension side and trying to figure out what do we have, starting in pre-K, that is a true knowledge-building curriculum? Because what we see a lot of times as they get into the upper elementary grades is that they're now reading the words, but the vocabulary, the background knowledge, the pieces that they need to build the comprehension, to make the meaning, is difficult. And so that knowledge-building piece, to make sure that they can be both, like I said, code breakers and meaning makers in their reading progress. And then, as you mentioned already, trying to have some more consistency in terms of the math intervention services across the division.
Thank you.
In addition to what Ms. Rutherford said, in the special ed domain, A-Base has a low cap of having about eight students on a caseload. You know, it vacillates from six to 10, depending on where you are. And it's really important to actually keep that low because of the intensity of services those students need. And that also flows across the other base programs, whether you're looking at C-Base, which is our functional skills, or B-Base, which is our children with behavioral, emotional issues. It helps to have people and time to help those children through this pandemic.
Thank you.
And trauma issues.
Time was one of the things I was trying to think of the right word for because as I think about the work that you do and the other base specialists do, you are wearing a special education hat and you're also wearing a general education curriculum hat.
Yes, across five grade levels.
Across five grade plus, or, you know, five to seventh grade levels could be. And so kind of how do you, how do you manage that?
Oh, wow. I do have an amazing team. I am lucky that I came from a regular ed classroom, so I had understanding of the SOLs at the elementary school level and I try to keep up on them. And we are, I'm very good at scheduling and determining what is most necessary at certain times. And also, we have great support from our central office staff. If something is going on and we need some assistance, they will problem-solve with our administration.
Thank you so much.
I had a clarifying question. When you had the orange and the blue bars up?
On the intensity, Ms. Lee?
On the intensity, yes.
Sure.
So are, would you say that the orange part is all, are like the three base programs or is it more than that or less than that?
Yeah, I would say 95% is base, A, B, or C.
So 95% of our students with disabilities are in a base program?
No, in the orange, right? If they're in the requiring 50% or more, most of those students are in a base program.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay. And when you had the test results compared with the rest of the division, do we have, and obviously you don't have this right at your fingertips, but do we have that compared with the state as well? Does the state see similar trends in that way?
I don't have that, but I, I mean, I don't have it with me. I have it, right, but I can get that to you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Sure, of course.
Since we're looking at data, I had one question on the first, or I guess it's technically the second, the first data slide, like second slide that you went to, would just follow. The IEP counts, there was a dip after the pandemic. I just wanted to take a quick look at that.
That one? Just overall?
Do we know, I mean, that's a, that's a drop of almost 200 students and I know we dropped, I can't think of the exact name, number, like we dropped significantly in student. 700 students, but that's two, that's a large percentage of those 700. Do we know what happened to those 200 students-ish that we don't see kind of IEPs for? Did they leave the county? Did they?
I would say, so concretely, do I know by the number? No. But there were three general categories. I mean, we did mirror what was happening for all students, right? Some chose to go to homeschool or private schools that might have had other options when we were closed or what have you. There was a more significant transancy or moving in and out during that time. And there were also just students who, especially our younger learners, who just delayed entering school where they might have otherwise.
Thank you. I was going to say, did you see a corresponding increase in your caseload? Sorry.
My caseload used to average between 30 and 40 kids and now it's more 40 to 60.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, the private school saw a big bump, which you would imagine anytime there's uncertainty in how the public schools are going to open or how they're going to provide, people turn to the private schools or homeschool.
And it sounds like from your case numbers of 52 and 10 going through eligibility, that those people aren't coming back.
Probably not, but, but every year that there's a transition, like certain people are in schools that only go up to fifth grade, say. And for whatever reason, people kind of want a security blanket when they're getting ready to send their kid off to middle school if it's a public school or something, especially if they've never had their kid in a public school before. And I try to talk them off the ledge and say, "It's going to be fine." And, but anyway, yeah, so you're right.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I feel like those are the two, your position and then the early childhood special ed. What do you call it, Katie? It's not a floater, the transient, the position for students of early childhood special ed who are in local preschools.
Oh, the community.
The community-based teacher. I wonder, like, I feel like your position in that community-based, or two, that we need to keep an eye out of people kind of staying in that private school but still needing services because they probably will eventually come back. Thank you.
Okay, I have one other question for Mr. Walding. You mentioned that you do training for the employees and also like behavioral training? So how often and under what context, how do you do it within the school?
Yeah, it's a great question. So a lot of times, like the one I did most recently, the teacher reached out to me and said, "I've got this issue. Can you come provide this training for all of these staffs?" Sometimes administrators will reach out to me, that's happening a lot right now too. So I've done some trainings for entire school teams on a, like a professional development day. Otherwise, I'm doing it after school or finding time to do it in the morning. And sometimes what I'm doing is pre-recording those and sending them off and then coming out to the school for like Q and A so that the staff can watch it when they have the opportunity. Yeah, for new TAs? So, yeah, so as I was saying earlier, the state provides us with, I want to say, 12 different standards that are required, that they see as required for everyone to know. And those range from environmental arrangements of classrooms to the basic functions of behavior to reinforcement, to writing IEPs. Those are, those are all parts of training that's required for TAs. And so what we've done in the past, pre-pandemic, we had, we would get together with all of those TAs at the beginning of the school year, usually on one of those early PD days. So I remember, I think, one of my first or second years here, we had like 200 TAs where we were teaching. It was a lot. And now what we've done is we've really pre-recorded a lot of that stuff and we've moved it all over to Schoologee. And so Schoologee is being used to host a lot of those training pieces. And then we'll come back in and meet with teams afterwards to wrap up any questions that they have.
Are you also doing that with the substitutes? Because I do know, you know, we, you know, it is a difficult job being any type of teacher, but definitely being a special ed teacher and so.
Yeah. Yeah, and honestly, the.
An assistant.
Yeah, no, absolutely. They are. And it's really, one of the problems that we've had in the past was getting TAs who were hired mid-year. So we typically would grab all these TAs at the beginning of the year as in a cohort and then we would kind of lose track of TAs that were hired in the middle of the year and have to catch them at the next cohort. But Schoologee's allowed us to do that with principals.
It's a great use of technology.
Yeah, it's great.
I have a question. First of all, I apologize for being late. I was trying a case and I did not even know it was a possibility for them to keep you after 5:00. And when it was 4:45, I was like, "Judge, we're only halfway through, so what are we going to do?" He's like, "We're going to continue to hear the case." So I just kept going until 7:30. So I'm sorry I missed the presentation. Some of it, I did get to hear some of you speak. I did, I went to an event and I heard, which I just didn't recall or know where this was coming from, that we have a program where we're training high school students to be special education TAs. Is that, is that fact or? No. Okay, good. I didn't know how to reply to that question because I hadn't heard of that program, so, okay.
And for the substitutes, which is a great question. Last Friday, the Friday before spring break, was our first opportunity that, as long as I've been here, where our specialists, we did get two hours with all substitutes who were able to come to do training specifically on how to work with students with disabilities. And it was amazing and super productive and got positive feedback from them in wanting that. So that felt really good and a positive experience. I wanted to make sure I shared that.
Thank you. That's amazing.
Just another question along those lines. I mean, one of, one of the issues that CAC has raised multiple times over the past several years is having some special ed training for teachers who are not special ed. I don't even know how to ask the question. What do you think, I mean, what is, I know you just said that you trained all substitutes who did a training, but what kind of PD is available to teach special ed for the general teaching population? I don't know even how to state the question.
So we, the autism specialists, we have put together trainings for the general education teachers. We typically get asked by admins to come in and provide that. And it's really awesome. We don't get to obviously go nearly as in-depth as we would like for some of these, but it's been, you know, when we think about just the autism lens, especially as we have new A-Base programs opening in schools, it's really great to be able to talk to those teachers. So the admins will bring us in and we just do a basic rundown of what it might be like to have a student with autism in your classroom and what types of supports that they need. And they could always obviously use more training on disabilities, but that is the part that we take care of.
Thank you.
Part of the job that I have in the B-Base teachers is when we are in the classroom, we become embedded coaches. So we are effectively coaching the teachers through how we are modeling. And many of the teachers, you know, we have very astute, wonderful Alamo County teachers, they pick up on it and they roll with it and they support our students in that way.
Of course. Just quickly, from a parent's perspective, because when, when we started with Alamo County Schools, I don't recall the year, but I, I know that there wasn't a lot of resources with respect to having onsite BCBA's. And so there may have been one, you know, many, many years ago, but the county has since hired a lot more. And I think that's really been crucial in terms of making the, because my son, actually, And I think that's really been crucial in terms of making the, because my, my son actually, before he enrolled in school, he, he attended Vaya, the Virginia Institute of Autism. He was receiving APA therapy, which is applied behavioral analysis therapy. That was overseen by a BCBA. One of the things we were able to do successfully is to coordinate those services with the school. And so a behavioral plan that started at Vaya was able to migrate to Hollymead. And then over the years, it was refined because the environment at Vaya is slightly different than the educational environment. But essentially, Kristin worked very closely with his case manager at Vaya to come, both of them worked really closely together, come together and develop a really comprehensive behavioral plan that, that worked very, very well. So I just want to underscore the importance of having the BCBA's as a resource for not just the special education, but for the regular education teachers as well. So, you know, I applaud the county for doing that.
I just wanted to, again, as Dr. Hikoff said, just say a huge thank you to, first to everyone who came and, and shared your stories with us. We so appreciate kind of hearing from your parents and teachers who do this every day. But a huge thank you, Katie, to you, and to Kevin, that your whole team for putting this together. We so appreciate seeing an in-depth look at, at special education because they are all our students. And we want to make sure we, we serve them to the way that they really deserve and their families deserve. So thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to mention everyone by name. Thanks, Katie and Ms. Thomas, Mr. Armstrong, Ms. Rutherford, Mr. Walding, Ms. Kress, and Mr. Hannah. Thanks so much for sharing with us.
Thank you.
Now I take back over so Judy does not get her thirty-five dollars.
I already got that earlier. Thank you.
Take it in cash.
We have one additional budget, or one additional item. By the way, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee, for stepping in when needed. I appreciate it. One more item, seven point two, which is our twenty twenty-four budget, twenty twenty-three is your twenty twenty-four budget update and recommendations. And Maya Kumazawa is gonna be presenting.
Good evening. I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning. And this evening, I'm here to provide some updates and recommendations to prepare you for the FY twenty-four budget adoption that's scheduled for the next meeting on April twenty-seventh. The information that I have this evening, most of those, the changes that I'm presenting are technical in nature. And thus, our, the investments we've made in the funding request continue to support our strategic plan, Learning for All. Before we begin, I just wanted to provide a state revenue update and how we got to where we are today. We'll start in December twenty twenty-two. That's when the governor released the introduced budget for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four biennium. In that budget, you are aware that the basic aid payments for both years were overstated. But since we received that information before the draft funding request was presented, we did make that correction as part of the draft funding request for FY twenty-four that was presented. In February, the Senate and the House presented their, their prospective budgets. And there were significant changes to the governor's budget, which we talked about a little bit. We did not take any action on those items in terms of the ACPS budget. And then during March, there were several pieces of additional information provided that really mostly reflected the governor's budget from December twenty twenty-two. You may have heard about the skinny budget, which held the FY twenty-three overstatement harmless, but no other change to FY twenty-four. Just a few days ago, we received the Calc tool for the General Assembly's adopted budget. That, those numbers have been incorporated into the recommendation for this evening. There are mostly technical adjustments sprinkled throughout. And our recommendation is to decrease our state revenue by about one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So overall, for the school fund, you can see at the top, we have the FY twenty-four funding request at two hundred and fifty-seven point three million dollars. We're proposing the following changes as described in the table. To begin is the decrease in state revenues, as I described. We suggest adding revenue from the Piedmont Regional Education Program that was previously not budgeted for building rental revenues. A correction is added to eliminate high school activity fees of ninety-two thousand dollars. We are also changing the way that we'd like to budget for two Title I or intervention FTEs that used to be budgeted in the federal revenue contingency special revenue fund. Rather than budgeting for the FTEs there for accounting purposes, we'd like to make a transfer into the school fund and budget those FTEs in the school fund. We're also bringing forward some recommended uses of our fund balance, which I'll share with you in a later slide. And then to balance, we also recommend about two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars to use our fund balance in FY twenty-four. The total changes in school fund revenues are about two point six million dollars, bringing the recommendation for the adopted budget to two hundred and fifty-nine point nine million dollars. This is the expenditure changes. As you can see at the bottom, the same amount in dollars is going up as revenues and expenditures remain balanced. These are the changes that are being proposed. The first line is technical updates and corrections. These impact a lot of our departments and school budgets as we have been working on refining the budget to make sure that it's as accurate as possible going into next year. In addition, we're proposing an increase to the transfer to the IDEA fund. As you heard about in the special education annual plan, we've been working on restructuring how we use those IDEA grant funds to fund all of our A-base teachers, for example. And as we restructured that fund and reanalyzed the costs and had a more accurate projections of that grant revenue, we deemed it necessary to provide an additional two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar transfer from the school fund into the IDEA fund to support those programs. We're also proposing the two FTEs that I mentioned that were previously funded as part of a special revenue fund to be moved into the school fund. Next, based on school board feedback, we're proposing to move two FTEs from regular emergency staffing to English learner staffing to be assigned as needed for growth in our English learner population needs. And then finally, corresponding one-time expenditures are being proposed to be funded by a one-time use of fund balance. So here's a little bit more detail about where we stand with our fund balance. As you heard, in the fourth quarter and the FY twenty-two financial report, our beginning balance for July first, twenty twenty-two stands at fourteen point six million dollars. We've budgeted in this current year's budget, budget to use about eleven point two million dollars of that. And as we work through this fiscal year, we're projecting to contribute about two point four million dollars by the end of this year. So our ending projected balance for FY twenty-three is five point eight million dollars. So that's our starting point number when we think about the FY twenty-four budget. What we had already budgeted as part of the funding request was a one point one million dollar use of that. And then this evening, I'm bringing forward about two point five million dollars in additional proposed use of that fund balance during the next budget year, which would leave us at an ending projected balance at the end of FY twenty-four of two point two million dollars. These are the proposed one-time uses in FY twenty-four. These items total about two point two million dollars. They're categorized into three groups. The first is capital and replacement. We're proposing to add an additional transfer to the learning resources fund of about five hundred thousand dollars to purchase K-eight science materials. We're also proposing to add one hundred thousand dollars to replace our AEDs throughout of our, throughout our buildings. And then thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for technology replacement costs. As we grow and add FTEs, we found that we needed to add more money into our technology replacement programs to support that growth. In the safety and security category, we're proposing to add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in athletic security, two hundred and twenty thousand to supplement our ongoing camera, security camera program, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to add window, uh, security window film to the front of our school buildings, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for blinds and shades upgrades, and one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for school radio upgrades. In the third category called operational, we're proposing to add one hundred thousand dollars for recruitment and retention efforts to our HR department, ninety thousand dollars for athletics equipment, and fifty thousand dollars to streamline digital access to some of our technology programs. And then the last piece in terms of changes from the funding request, those are outlined here on this table. The FY twenty-four funding request for all of our special revenue funds combined was twenty-nine point one million dollars. And these are the changes that we're proposing to amend that funding request. As I mentioned earlier, we are increasing our IDEA special education fund. Most, what you see here, most of that, the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that piece was previously budgeted in the funding request from the school fund, but inadvertently got missed in that special revenue fund. So it is a technical correction at this point. We are updating some of our other funds in the federal revenue contingency, the technology equipment replacement to incorporate some of the items that I mentioned, learning resources for the additional transfer for the learning materials, and then some other technical corrections in miscellaneous grants and our migrant grant. So this would increase our total special revenue funds by about one point two million dollars, bringing the new total to thirty point three million dollars. And I will pause for questions, but the last slide just provides an outline of the work you have done to get to this point. This is sort of the final set of recommendations and changes. And hopefully, at the next board meeting, you feel prepared to adopt that budget. So I'll take any questions at this time to help with that.
Thanks very much for this, Maya. The shift from emergency staffing, is that what it was, to EL staffing? What is emergency staffing usually used for?
I don't know if I'm the best person to answer that.
So it's, as emergency implies, it usually is around enrollment projections. So we're, you know, we're pretty, when you look at the whole school system, our enrollment projections are really pretty close, you know, when you just look at the total number. However, at the school level, you know, you could see a fluctuation that wasn't anticipated, particularly if, like, you get a large kindergarten class coming in that you weren't anticipating, things like that. So we hold those positions in reserve and try to staff schools in real time up to when school starts and sometimes a little bit after. However, in the recent years, we really, we, we always do the contingency, and I think it's about five FTE, usually five or six. But we haven't had to use them. So we do feel pretty confident that without adding to the budget, we could address Ms. Osborne's concern that if we do see a larger enrollment than we were anticipating around EL students, that we could, could use that staffing. So it would still be emergency staffing. We're just putting a fence around it and saying, this is, we want to hold this for sure, these, these two, just to see what happens with the EL students. Is that, is that pretty accurate, Dr. Kaiser? Okay, thank you. I know, I wanted to save you from having to walk over to the.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question about the athletic security. Could you switch to that slide or is it too hard to do? Okay, yeah. How many schools would be involved in the window film and the blind shades upgrades or?
Good evening. The window film and the blind shade upgrades and the school radio upgrades would impact all schools. Specifically, the window film, we actually got a secure, we got a grant from the DOE to install that at Greer Elementary in Walton. So that's underway. So if you see that going earlier, that's why. But based on that work, we want to expand it to all schools.
And this, this was a recommendation that came out of the superintendent's safety advisory group that meets quarterly throughout the year to review ongoing innovations around school safety to try to determine what are, what are things that we can put in place? Film, for example, that it's kind of invisible. It doesn't harden the school environment. However, if you use it in the front-facing at parts of the school, you notice over the years, as we've done additions and renovations, Red Hill, for example, the, the whole front office is, is glass, basically. So this, this would help mitigate a situation where there was a shooter by installing that.
Yeah, I do want to clarify, it's not bulletproof.
Right.
It is security film that will slow down the breaking glass.
Yeah.
I'm assuming since you didn't mention it, the state did not opt for the seven percent increase? And is that final?
Yes, this reflects what the General Assembly adopted. If there is a special session that's convened, there may be a change. And we would incorporate that as a budget amendment if that were the desire. Thank you.
I have one question. It's a minor item, but the digital access, you said, the streamlining access to technology, what does that mean?
This was a request from the Technology Department to make it easier for students to access certain materials. I, I believe it's, I don't know if anyone here can speak to it, it can, it takes away some middle steps of getting access to already existing programs.
Like helping with single sign-on?
Yeah, it's, that's, that's what you, I was wait, I heard enough now. You reminded me of Dr. Diggs talking about it through the process. But as you know, depending on the software application that's on the computer, the number of hoops you have to jump through that are generated either by, by our, I guess you might call them firewalls or security measures, is different for different programs. And also, on the other end, you've got, you sometimes have more than one, you know, one click to get to where you're going. And there are some applications that they can purchase that will significantly cut down on the multiple clicks for students to get to the resources that they need to do their work. You know, and you, you've experienced this because you might be in a place where you've got high-speed internet and the clicks aren't really a big deal because you can kind of cycle through them pretty, pretty rapidly and get to what you need. But as soon as you start getting in areas where the bandwidth isn't so great, the students could get, where you get the wheel of death going each time they try to click on something. So I think this would be a good enhancement. And when you lay it out over the whole school system with the numbers of employees and students, it's a relatively small investment for the improvement, I think.
Are there any more questions?
Thank you, Maya.
Yeah.
Thank you, Maya.
Thank you. This is great. I feel like the additions really kind of account for some of the conversations we've had about where we wanted to see investments. So thank you for that. That brings us to school board superintendent business round two. Or did we already do that? Is that just Ms.?
You already did that.
Okay.
I just think, I just want to say, if they're still listening or for the record, I just really appreciate our special education staff and the parent that attended tonight. I agree, that's, that's the first time we've had, usually you probably remember with the special education plan, it's in the, it's in the consent agenda. And staff would come up and say, you've read it. Do you have any questions? And I just really appreciate the level of detail. And it just, between that and doing our teacher and classified staff recognitions at the beginning, I mean, it just really reminds me the high-quality educators and support staff that we have in our schools. It really is amazing to hear about the level of expertise and the, and the work that they do to, to help our students. So for me, I was really inspired tonight to hear what they had to say and to learn from them. And I really appreciate our HR team and Mr. Jeremina and community engagement putting together the recognition program. For me, it's a dream come true for Alamo County to start having that type of program so that we can then start promoting our teachers to the region five level and then hopefully have a state teacher of the year. So we certainly have the talent in our school system and the dedication to get there. So now we will have a, a springboard for it. And I really appreciate the board supporting that work. Thank you.
And that's aligned with the Gallup poll, too. And that's aligned with the Gallup poll to more recognition and opportunity for recognizing the good work that teachers are doing. And also I'd like to shout out Ellen because she proposed the special education work session topic. So thank you. And if you guys have more ideas, keep them coming. I believe our next one will be from Dr. Berlin's suggestion. So, is there any other business?
Not business, but just two announcements. There was a soft opening of the Boys and Girls Club on the Lamb's Lane campus on Tuesday. I think it was Tuesday, Monday, I think. And any of you who weren't there but would love to see that facility, which is a great addition, there's a community-wide open house on the 28th of this month, and it's, it's really something worth seeing. Secondly, as you know, Dr. Berlin and I are members of the, of the Albemarle Foundation for Education Board, and we have, as of Monday, hired a new executive, not a new, the first executive director. We will be launching grant applications and fundraising very soon. And I'm very, it took us a long time to get here, but I think we're where we need to be. That's about right, Dr. Berlin?
Yes, wonderful.
So look forward to seeing some good things.
Did you guys, in my absence, discuss the scheduling for the June meeting?
We did not.
Okay. That is one additional item. I sent an email about, Kate, I'll let you, I'll let you explain if you don't mind.
I'm not sure what there is to explain. Historically, we have not had a school board meeting in the last two weeks of June, and some of us have made plans for the last two weeks of June. We've done that because we have had a meeting and then our retreat. So I would propose that we eliminate that second meeting, although Chair Coulson has informed, we, we may need to have a special meeting, special closed meeting to address some personnel issues.
Yes, and that's coming from Dr. Haas. And I think we're going to get some clarity on whether or not we need that closed meeting, but it would be short, it would be for appointments, and as long as we had a quorum, we could move on. How do we feel, I just rather than go back and forth in email, how do we feel about making that, canceling the meeting with a pending closed meeting, we'll keep a placeholder and a notice for a closed meeting if we need it, but we'll find more information on?
Sounds good.
Sounds good?
That works.
Okay. Okay, that works. So Ms. Thompson, if you could make the adjustments for the calendar, that'd be good. All right, it'd be appreciated. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our meeting. How did your trial go?